Okay, so to start off. So the first item we have are the four goals and the district goals. So I was thinking if we start off with the district goals, we could then come up with our goals to coincide with those. And do you think you put something in your recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. So in the folder there is proposed district goals for this school year coming up.
In the back of last year's.
Okay, good. So I was gonna say I did bring, just in case, to read off last year's and the year before. So generally, when we work out district goals, each year could be just a new game. But because we have Strategic Coherence Plan, it was a five-year plan to start off with and to work with that to see where that takes us. We are in starting year three of that. So each year kind of leads us into that. And so if we're not starting from scratch, we're going to go with our goals, one year leads to the next. And so, I mean, I guess I could just read through these. Basically, just to recap, year one was, you know, the beginning of the SCP, identifying those skills and all the discussions on how we're going to implement them and go forward. Year two was actually implementing those goals, academic and social-emotional skills that were identified in the Strategic Coherence Plan. And then year three is just gonna be a deeper immersion of them. I'm imagining, so let's see. Okay, so one. By May 2019, utilize the Strategic Coherence Plan outcome goals listed on pages thirty-six to forty-two of the document. These are the folders.
That's the document.
Okay.
And that's a part of the original SCP.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Along with the internal co-her survey, which is created by Strategic Education Research Corporation. Is that this one? Yep, okay. To identify ways to assist teachers as they continue to integrate critical thinking, collaboration, communication, perseverance, adaptability, and civic responsibility into their curriculum, instruction, assessment, the learning environment, and professional learning.
And you were saying?
Well, actually, thank you, yes. So when we are coming up with district goals, they call them, I think I once heard, the SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable.
Attainable, results, and...
And time now. There we go. That's right. Tradified. And so, thank you, Valerie. Should put them in that context. And the reason for that is really to make them achievable. The purpose for that is, you know, if we come up with goals that are... We can have an ultimate very lofty goal, but then you need the steps to get there. And you want to achieve your goals on a yearly basis so that ultimately you achieve the overall goal. And then we evaluate that throughout the year and then at the end, see where we end up. Okay, so number two. By May 2019, extend online resources, which include articles, videos, podcasts, blog posts for the community to show how educators are integrating critical thinking, collaboration, communication, perseverance, adaptability, and civic responsibility into their curriculum, instruction. Yep. So the learning environment, instructional learning environment, and professional learning.
And assess, assess mission and...
Okay.
This is five.
Well, this is just a step one in our process of this, so. By May 2019, finalize SCP rubrics that educators can use to guide and monitor the integration of critical thinking, collaboration, communication, perseverance, adaptability, civic responsibility into their curriculum, instruction, assessment, learning environment, and professional learning. Four, by May 2019, establish a series of infographs, workshops, and forums to help the community understand the various components of the school budget, finances, and operations. Five, by May 2019, our media plan and community input, develop ways to keep the members of the community who no longer have children in the schools engaged in what is happening in the schools. So if you all want to just take a minute, look over last year's goals and then look back at this year's goals and see how that's building on it. And then we can, you know, have a discussion on anything that anyone might want to add to this. And again, go ahead.
And these are the definitions of the skills that was actually developed in our second year. We defined this.
And keeping in mind that we should be building and continuing to reach that five-year mark with our assessment. I can start with something? So just a question. So last year we had... So I think they're good. Actually, some of these were suggestions I was gonna make for us as a board as well. So I think, you know, it aligned well from the direction I was thinking of heading in. Last year, we had develop social-emotional mental health program. And I know with our code of conduct, I know that we have for our next meeting, a first kind of presentation on it to hopefully adopt it in September. But then there is, we're still working on changes to it for a mid-year type of... Do we have to do another posting and another kind of acceptance at that point?
We won't finish the revisions until the start of the 2019 school year. So the current code of conduct will be what we use for coming year. And once the committee agrees, we'll be able to start the rest of the work. It'll be pretty, you know, it's a pretty extensive overhaul.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we won't be ready to present anything to the board until around January of 2019. And then discussion, review, whatever has, you know, has to happen. And then whatever comes out of that, the earliest timeframe for adopting anything for the coming, for nineteen, the September, twenty nineteen.
For the next school year, okay. So then with that, and since, is there more work, targeted work that needs to be identified? Or, I mean, because I know we achieved a lot of, you know, for number three from last year, a good foundation and a direction and implementing things already. Is there a need to continue any of that as far as a goal? Or is it kind of in the works and, you know, gonna have them regardless? So just...
It's in pretty good shape. The state released a mental health guide, a guidance document in July. And now, of course, lots of people are very concerned because the expectation is that some of that will be adopted or integrated into the health curriculum. Some portions of it should be integrated into health, but the other portions of it are to mental health counselors. Erin Alvarez is here in high school and Hilda Placette, who's the K-8 mental health counselor. So they're, they have a pretty good structure and format, which didn't exist last year, but the state is really making sure that districts adopt mental health standards and practices and integrating it to curriculum. So we're in really good shape with regards to that. And then we have two people, the new social worker here, and the new mental health counselor here was a social worker at CD Star. So she really comes prepared and she also has the mental health credential, which is an important part of being a mental health counselor. So Hilda's working on it. So we're in pretty good shape in that regard.
Okay.
Because we do have, you know, providers here to actually do the work of working with children and parents and the community and, you know, convening assemblies and being involved in MTSSP meetings, which is the Multi-Tier System of Supports Meeting for both behavioral and academic meetings. So they, we're farther ahead actually than the state is with regards to the fact that we're doing two mental health counselors early on.
That's good.
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay, then, I was... Okay, so that was... So for me, it's good because the way I, I mean, the way I read these, we're continuing where we should be with year three as far as the SCP. And I like, you know, four and five, we move on to four goals. I was gonna suggest things in those areas as well for us. So I think they're important areas to focus on as well.
I just have a question. In number three, the SCP rubrics, are those to be used by the teachers to sort of check themselves?
It is, yes. It's actually a group... This past year, the SCP teams made about, on a good day, we probably had about fifty people. And they were teachers, I mean, the liaisons from each of the four schools, plus the leaders. And what we worked on then was the foundations, using something called the Four Cs rubrics, which we talked about last year, which were created by Ed Leder21, which is, you know, kind of the gold standard for rubrics around the Four Cs, critical thinking, creativity, communication, collaboration. So we use those as a foundation to develop rubrics on perseverance, civic responsibility, adaptability, perseverance, and collaboration, communication. So they wouldn't draft format last year, and we really needed to flush those out more. So teamwork this summer with Christian Jesus or Hernandez, AP at Wells, about five or six teachers came together and they actually have their rubrics in pretty good shape. And these are our own rubrics that are made by us. So I think they're really going to help people. So we'll roll them out as drafts to the teachers so that they can use those as they create their own curriculum and assessments and classroom instruction and the learning environment. So, and obviously, there'll be revisions because we want them to give us feedback about them. They're not, you know, ready to roll and put on the shelf, but as a really good foundation for identifying common elements across those in all the schools, that people can have common language. And that was the goal for last year, which is to really come up with common language so that my critical thinking is different from Glenn's, different from Danny's, different from Diane's, but everyone has the same understanding of what those are and what the activities are.
To that point, I mean, I don't know that necessarily language has to be in here, but you bring up a good point that, you know, these are the skills, but how it's approached can be different. They're really, you know, if we can maybe allow for a conversation that stresses the freedom teachers really have within, within this, you know, it's, maybe that might manage some tensions some teachers may, you know, are having with, you know, any, you know, change is different for some more than others. And if somehow we can incorporate that space for anyone who's, you know, doesn't maybe quite get that there's freedom in this, I mean, there's a goal and there's, there's a strict guideline to what we're doing, but within that, there's different interpretation of what that could look like. I'm not quite sure how to frame that, but...
Well, the rubrics, you know, what we don't wanna compromise on is that, let's say, in the average elementary classrooms, there are nine or ten teachers, right? You don't want each of them interpreting this to, you know, according to how they view it, which is why the profile of the graduate was really critical for us as well as these rubrics. What is independent is how, you know, a teacher integrates critical thinking in their own content. So it's going to look different as it should. So, but, but the definition of critical thinking, regardless of your content, does have to embody these skills. You know, students have to be engaged in analyzing content. They have to be applying the skills to solve real-world problems. So that kind of thinking is what is really sort of the foundation. But the way you choose to do it as a social studies teacher, math teacher, or science teacher is up to you and your team.
Yes, I think that's...
And usually the teams, and usually teachers work in teams. So, you know, they are, they, they will pretty much come up to, you know, come, you know, they'll figure out something that they want to do together. For example, the senior project shifted two years ago here in English. So they are not just writing paper anymore. They actually do TED Talks. They decided to do that themselves as a, as a way to focus on how to help children to apply skills to real-world contexts. What an awes- what an awesome way to do that. So an authentic audience, a product that has value, and a way in which they can show, how children can show what they understand about complex ideas. It's pretty cool. So if you ever get a chance to take a look at it, do...
Yeah, that would be good.
I have one question. Number one, I feel, how many, I don't know if this is something that you can actually answer, but how many, it says identify ways to assist teachers to integrate the SCP. Do you have any idea or thought on how many teachers are on board? I mean, we know some are not, you know, but, or are resistant, but what's your feeling on like the teachers being on board? Because I feel like I saw, wasn't there a survey of the SCP that teachers were on board, the students were on board, everybody was on board? I think it was the parents, I think, that they found...
It was at Wells.
Yeah, that found like the class. But what are your thoughts on how the teachers are?
We actually surveyed the teachers. I mean, these are all voluntary surveys, so they're not, there's not anything, we don't put any pressure on them or go back to them. We send it out once, ask them. The first time around, we asked the question of what their comfort level is and understanding. And since last year's focus was on promoting an understanding and helping people to realize that there's a definition for these. We started off the year with probably, I'm sorry, we ended last, the twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen-seventeen school year with a survey asking them, kind of, what do you know about these? So obviously, there were, you know, not as many, probably half of them kind of knew it, you know, a few of them knew it somewhat, and there was, you know, it fell off from that point. This past year in January, this January twenty eighteen, we administered the SAFE survey. It's two questions. You basically would tell us, you know, what your grade level is. We didn't ask your name and then what your understandings were. There was just a sliver of people, probably three, who didn't know anything about them. Now, these were teachers as well as teaching assistants and monitors who also participated. Just a fair number of people know this, who know this exists. The challenge is, which we didn't put any pressure on anyone last year, we said, use this to take a look at your own practices. We didn't say go off, we have to by, you know, by June thirtieth, you have to have these fully integrated. We didn't say that. We said, take these and see how you currently use them in your own content. And some people, I would say mostly at the K-5 level, are much farther ahead than their secondary partners. They do this. I mean, they take into this. I mean, I know this, I've been in classes, we've seen it when we visited classes, even the students can talk about how they think critically. I think you probably, if not three-quarters of the K-5 teachers are really comfortable with this. It's largely driven by the fact that they have curriculum in ELA, the Teachers College Reading and Writing Workshop. ELA curriculum is built around these skills. So if you're in a reading and writing workshop, you see children talking about their writing and their reading, and making connections across themes and concepts in ELA. So for them, they've been practicing it for years, which is when we adopted TC. At the secondary level, you'll see, obviously, I think, increasing levels at the middle school. Because they, they've been doing some work in like an innovator circle, you know, as they, they actually did most of the work in, with the use of the Chromebooks and making sure that there was, you know, curriculum that supported those. It's less so at the high school, in spots, as I mentioned, eleven, twelve-grade English, art, music, math. And less so in science.
So then, yeah, I guess how, that's part of the plan then for...
Well, that's the tension, as you mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, that we have, you know, we, we did not, you know, we did not stress you have to show us a product at the end of the school year. We said, these are, and, you know, and leaders talk about these regularly during faculty meetings or in PLC times and on our, maybe at professional learning days. So there's a lot of conversation, a lot of examples, a lot of people share any ideas and examples. Our Project Be the Way STEM curriculum is also going to help because, again, it's like the TC reading and writing workshop that build, that the skills are built in. It's a twenty-first century curriculum, so it's easier to pull that off. So if you go over to Rebecca Greenfield's classroom and her Project Be the Way class here, her intro to engineering and the other one that she's tooling to, what was that, second one, Michelle, that she learned this past summer? Part two of that. Part two.
Aeronautical engineering.
I was gonna say something about the state.
So if they actually get the skills there, you see a lot of application of complex, you know, concepts being, you know, actually used in this neighbor's basic environment. You see it in the middle school, Tony Forte and Katie and Beth also integrating the Project Be the Way concepts. You absolutely see it at the intermediate level. And it's gonna start in the K-2 level in September. So it's, there's challenges and obviously for, you know, it's, you know, secondary is always tough. Now, I don't care where you are, secondary is always tough. These are content masters. They, that's what they know. They are, you know, they know their content and they teach their content and it's governed by a text at the end, here, Regent's. It's really hard to move them into a different, you know, territory unless they're doing a lot of this themselves. Some are trying, but, you know, some are a little more, will need a little more assistance, which is why this first goal is really important for them.
Well, and perhaps, I mean, I know it's already happening, but just more, I'm not quite sure how, but collaboration with teachers who are having success, finding a way, you know, to help bridge, maybe, you know, the delay or whatever's happening for some others.
We have about thirteen videos on our SCP site. These are teachers who were in the early stages, like October last year. They volunteered to have someone come in, maybe it was Frankie, videotape them teaching an example of one of these skills. And they were cross-K, you know, it's cross-K-12. And that was, the purpose for that was to provide some examples to teachers, like, you know, look at these, look at these five-minute, I think it was maybe five minutes, nine minutes, was the longest, examples, these snapshots, as a way of letting them know, look, this is really not hard. You know, you look at these, I bet you you're gonna find something you're already doing. So that was the purpose of those. And there's a lot of, a lot of cross-pollination, a lot of conversations, as I said, a great deal more at the K-5 level than any other place in the system.
But another place I think where we might be able to reach would be through the C-19 because it's an educational goal. And so this way, you know, maybe we could, you know, could see the people that are gonna be there, you know, representatives, we were talking about, potentially rotating members and what, you know, and that might be a platform for which we as a board and everyone else, you know, could come together and kind of discuss what are some ways that we can help you? What are you looking for? Or what, what is the issue at hand? So that might be a forum where we could get involved and kind of, as a board, work through the goals and support Valerie's goals as well as the district.
No, I don't. I don't know if you're wondering.
One of the things that we were trying to help some of our teachers with is that, you know, this is not kind of à la carte, that one year you can choose perseverance and the next year is critical thinking and the next year is civic responsibility, that that really wouldn't serve children well because these are not discrete skills, they are integrated. So while we're saying, while we're not saying to them, you must have this completely one-hundred percent under your belt and be comfortable with it by a certain date, but that they have to blend, they have to pull these together and in their own way. And some of them will identify things that they like to do and they wanna focus more on. For example, this summer, Michelle worked with a group of primarily middle school teachers, but there were a few others signed up across K, there was some from here as well as K-5. And they wanted to know about project-based learning. Project-based learning is really the gold star for group work, but this is group work on steroids. You know, these are people who are actually working on, you know, some complex idea over a period of time. It can be six weeks, it can be a semester. They're, they're pulling apart, they're, they have choices around what they do and how they focus on it. And at the end of it, they're creating a product or they can make a presentation that really shows what they understand. So it's not a, you know, multiple choice question, a fill-in-the-box. This is really talking about and explaining what you're doing and how this life is important and relevant. There are teachers here, over the course of four years, for three days, who came in to learn how to do this. And they wanted to do it. It wasn't us. We just said, you know, inside, we're having a party, you know, that this was wonderful, that they would wanna learn this. So there are people who want to, to do things differently and our, you know, what we are, we're hoping is that we hear more of that so we can support them. But that's pretty awesome that they wanted to do that and it was a matter of, you know, this is what's happening, if you'd like to, please come. And this is, this is really going to support how you integrate these skills because it's built in, the fact that they're doing something where they're applying, you know, real-world ideas to solve problems and to create some product that they've made a choice. It could be a movie, it could be a podcast, it could be, you know, writing, you know, some author or some engineer or someone or another, but really being driven by a passion that they have themselves, which is really what we ultimately want all children to develop is their own, identify their own passions around this.
So, so good. I think that's... Those are good district goals. So something I wanted to bring up in regard to goals and our SCP, and I know you brought this up also, Valerie, a year ago. And I remember, you know, going back now, three years ago, when we were putting our SCP together, Jonathan, who was our guide in this work, he said, you know, if we follow the work, we will get to this great end result. But one of the things that I guess I wanna see, can we start maybe looking at it or tracking and see if we're, are we progressing in this direction regarding our percentages? You know, our graduation rates. Like, so we are also monitoring as we do this work and how that looks going. And, you know, how that, how, because they should be intertwining and they should be, there should be, and it may start at elementary. I mean, it may be that that's where there's, the teachers are doing more work with it and perhaps, and that's fine. If it's building in that, then it's progressive and we'll get there. But just somehow to also monitor the growth of the final end result that we're looking for, you know, the profile of a graduate and are things coming together to look like we are heading in the right direction? Do we need to tweak anything along the way? And just to kind of be mindful of that. So that was something I thought, maybe we can also, you know, how are we tracking that progress with the work? I mean, we could, of course, you know, I think what he was saying was, you know, within the five years, then you kind of, you see, you know, where you're at and you should be at that end result. But I think it would be wise to kind of take a look at it with year three starting, right? This is year three. And just see, you know, where we're at kind of in the midway point at some point through the year. And then with that, I, I'm not even quite sure when or where or how, but the national ranking idea. I know that many years ago, there was a decision made to not submit for certain rankings, you know, the National U.S. News and whoever else does that. I know that there's local kind of agencies that do their own... that do their own, but I'm wondering if, you know, the, the decision actually goes back to JADE. So I just was wondering if anyone had thoughts on that. And so how that works is, you know, what it says, for example, like US News World Report or whoever, is that who does it?
Yes.
You know, and it'll say, you know, not ranked. We're not ranked because we don't provide information. And so it's not that you're so poor you're not ranked. It's that every district can choose whether you want to participate in that ranking system. And fundamentally, there are flaws in the ranking that they do. Yes, there are certain percentages and factors that they can look at that are undeniable. But how districts choose to, I think, you know, proportion out other things, it's not always apples to apples. And a decision was made a long time ago to, to not be part of that. And I don't know if it's something that we want to revisit and, you know, go through with that.
Just to go back to a point earlier that you made earlier, the pages that were also attached that were at the back of the Strategic Coherence Plan is exactly that guide that Jonathan referenced that we should look at. And the timelines have to be adjusted because we started out a little differently than how we, you know, originally designed this in terms of what we were going to be. So this is a beginning guide along with this coherence protocol that really does also help get at like what teachers are doing, how they see, you know, what their needs are, whether they feel a sense of, of that their ideas are important in regards to how they implement these skills. So that's absolutely a critical part of it. And that will be some of the work that we do this year. In addition to try and find some ways to do more learning walks, which is another way of collecting information as a team, we actually did that this past year, with a team of teachers going in with an administrator, actually, you know, looking at a particular question, for example. We could decide on, you know, on one month if we want to look at how teachers are integrating critical thinking and look at that across K-12. And another month, we could look at another skill. So that's, that's another important way in which we can get some information on top of taking a look at these rubrics. We're also going to look at student work. And we can look at student work and protocols that help us to really, you know, understand. So if this is an example of, for example, how students apply concepts to solve a problem of writing, then we can look at a piece of writing across all grade levels to, to, to get a sense of that. So those are some additional ways or additional protocols that we're trying to build in. In terms of the rankings, I mean, there are four that I think most people know about. One's called School Digger, which is a system-wide ranking, which doesn't look at, doesn't look at individual schools, but looks at the whole system. And it calculates it based upon test scores from the State Department, which is, you know, not, you know,
Right.
innovative, but it, you know, it is what it uses.
That's another thing that's also flawed because other high-ranking districts actually have their law students tests, take tests that aren't required by the state to help the pool, you know, reflect better. You don't necessarily do that at middle school, late grade.
Well, one of the big changes is the OPDA numbers with fairly large numbers of students who don't take the tests.
Right.
And that affects this School Digger. The other one is called NITCH. And NITCH is sort of like, you know, there's a voting component to this and it is, the different schools can be ranked. So really it's based upon, you know, anyone in the district can actually write reviews. I almost saw 18 reviews.
That's the other thing I noticed with them also, right? And that carries the weight of, you know.
Eighteen representing eighteen thousand. It's just, it's mathematically flawed.
Yes. And so that's one. The other is called Great Schools, which has been revamped. Great Schools is not necessarily subjective. They actually do look at equity. They look at test scores and college readiness. And so there's weight placed on how low income or, or students whose first language is not English are actually supported in the districts that could count against the district. And actually, in one of these, our ranking on equity is at 14%. So, but again, the rating, there are not a lot of people who are, you know, there are not a lot of examples of this, but that's one of them. And they look at advanced placement participation and so forth. So that's, that's Great Schools. And then US News and World Report, which, which is even more selective. I mean, I know school districts that are, you know, have lots of students participating in AP and IB and so forth, and they don't get ranked very highly. And they have fewer students who might be low income or whose first language is not English. So it's, it's a lot more competitive. And, you know, if you talk to some of the districts, you know, some of the, you know, boutique communities, River, you know, school districts, Westchester districts, they're not necessarily, you know, elevated to be ranked. You know, that's not how they see themselves. I mean, you know, they have their own way in which they want to celebrate the things that they do in the work. So it's not necessarily universally like the gold standard, they said be ranked in US News and World Report and some schools. So I just say that to, just, you know, lay that out. And it's up to us if we want to use our resources to focus on these or take a look at one or two. Maybe it is Great Schools starting with, since NITCH is really, you know, kind of like, you know, liking something on Twitter or Facebook.
Yeah. I think the unfortunate thing is, I mean, you know, until you're really immersed in education and if you're not, if you're just a parent and kind of doing a quick search on what to do, I mean, we rely on these things, as flawed as they are. And, you know, so it just makes me think, you know, how we, we're doing great work here. And how do we get that out there? You know, our kids are going to Ivy League schools. That doesn't happen by accident. So it's, it's a tough place to be. And on one hand, it's like, you know, just put it out there and let, let US News do it, let them all do whatever. But I think that we should also do our own promoting of what we do in our district. I just don't know what that looks like yet. Maybe perhaps with BoSies and as we go forward with them, we can find ways to do that. But does anyone else have thoughts? Is it, is it, it's a thing? It's difficult.
I would think the best way to get it out is somewhere through that media plan, somewhere, you know, in there, there should be a component that talks about what's going on in our schools. You know, when parents start looking around, test scores do come into play. But you also can go, if you can search through potential school districts that you're looking at, look through their website or whatever. Parents, you know, know there's other places to get information. I know with US News and World Report, there's a lot of universities and colleges that refuse to submit information to that as well. And they're usually given an asterisk and say they refused to provide the information. Because I know US News and World Report does a lot based on income of, of the area and the students that are coming in. And, you know, and then if they, you know, how many, you know, exchange students, they have foreign students, they pay more than an American student does at most private universities. So all of a sudden, you, you know, you see, oh, well, they've got this great, you know, but that's because they're counting the foreign students. I think somewhere in there, the media plan needs to incorporate the good things that are going on.
Yes.
And which goes back to the BoSies. We need to market what's right here.
We don't have a way right now, which I really look forward to, hopefully it'll be approved tomorrow night, of publicizing at the end of the year, all the things are in the graduation brochure, which lists every school our children attend, all the awards that they received, the rankings. I mean, all of that is, but it's only in the graduation program. So if you, if your son or daughter graduates that year, they get it, they see it. We don't put any of this. That's a lot of information. And once that gets out, I think that's going to really impress people. I mean, it impresses me when I take a look at it.
You said that the US News and World Report's not the gold standard. Is there something else? Maybe not even a competitive ranking system, but some other standard that's out there? Maybe it's something that, you know, has an objective criteria and if you meet that, whether it's a school of excellence or something else that we can strive for? Something else where sort of somebody from the outside, it's not us saying we're doing a great job, but somebody from the outside looks at all of the things and says, you know what? The school is doing well. I mean, is there something else?
That was part of, one of the versions of the Secondary and Education Act. There are districts that still do, but a lot of districts don't even meet the criteria because they have so many children who don't take assessment.
Is that what it's based on really?
That's one of the ways that you're disqualified now, is that, you know, if your, if your participation level is low, that affects, you know, your ability to be part of that whole system, which is a state, an administrative system, an urban system. I think that once, you know, some of the things that are lost in here that you have to dig through to see in Great Schools, the, you know, the numbers of children, the scores on ACTs and SATs and, you know, the numbers of children who, you know, score, you know, fours and fives on APs, you know, so whether you have, you know, your school district participates in international bachelor award, how many children are going on to these STEM, these robotics, you know, competitions? You know, how many children are, you know, applying for merit scholarships? Those are the kinds of things that, you know, that I think tell people a lot about your school district and the opportunities children have, the, the numbers of things that are happening athletically. I mean, we publish when our students, you know, sign a commitment letter, you know, that, you know, Eric comes and he, you know, photographs that and puts it in the paper. That's a big deal. It should be, to me, that's more than, than, it should be more than in the public paper, public quarter. That is a big deal. You know, we've had children to go on, we've had, you know, some, you know, lots of wonderful athletes, but, you know, we had one of the only females in the country who got a competitive scholarship, you know, as a wrestler, you know, you know, full, full, almost a full ride. That is unheard of. We had her, you know, in our school, you know, in our district. So there's things like that that we miss by not getting them published. And that I think is going to mean, you know, that's going to make a big difference. And that offset some of this stuff. You know, parents can look at this, but they're also looking at, you know, a whole collection of data on students. And, you know, I think the more that we give children an opportunity to do things like that, you know, as I said, compete with some of these arenas where they're competing with students all over the country, that's going to be pretty cool. Victor Cruz, who went to DC and was the page for Sugar. Yeah. One of the only ones who had a student.
Those are the kinds of things that we want. BoSies.
We want BoSies to cover it or we want someone to push those things out. There are a lot of little secrets like that in the district. Like, a lot of that. And they shouldn't.
I mean, because unless you're in the schools, you don't know.
You don't know.
But I guess my question is, I feel like a media plan is probably realistically going to be talking to people who are inside the district, whereas these rankings and things are going to be viewed by people who are outside the district. So is there a way to sort of, I mean, the, the social media and doing those things, I think is extremely valuable and I totally support that idea. But I guess my question is, can we, if we're discussing the idea of rankings, is there something that sort of gets farther outside, gets out of county, gets out of near or state even to allow people to see?
What the media plan offers us is an opportunity for press releases. We don't press releases. So press releases push things out to other arenas outside of county, no matter the state. So I think the more of that that we, we build up. And I think some of that will end up in all of this stuff too, you know, that we'll see people who, you know, select, you know, you know, they, they choose the School Digger or, or NITCH or, or, you know, Great Schools. So I think that will naturally occur. I think the fact that there aren't any more of these ranking systems tells you a lot about how people are not really connected to this kind of being the most supportive way to, to, you know, communicate what's happening in the school district. And I think once we have BoSies involved, that person here too, is, you know, capturing everything, that's when the, I think that's going to mean a great deal for the district's, you know, image in terms of what's happening with our students.
Well, I think the question is, who are these rankings for? Are they, we want these rankings out there to convince people to come to Brewster and live here and send their kids to the schools? Is it intended to make people feel better who already sent their kids to these schools? I mean, what is the point? I'm literally, because I don't see a point in the rankings. What is the point of the rankings? Because if the idea is, should we do it or not? I think we should identify why we would do it. And then depending on what that answer is, maybe it's tackled by, you know, putting out this information in a better way. Because if it's to get, convince people to come here or maybe to convince that, you know, I don't know, you know, family to move up from Westchester to here, I would think that those people would be on our website. I would think that they would be looking at anything that's out there about Brewster, not just the US News and World Report ranking. People who have never set foot at Brewster. But I, I just, I guess I don't understand really what the ranking, what the purpose is.
I think I can see value in independent evaluation and sort of a validation of what we're doing and how well things are going here. I can see that that's easily digestible. I don't like competitive, especially if the rules for how you win the game are sort of sketchy and, and, you know, not, not, definitely not a complete picture of what's going on. But I could see, I could see some value in it, some of the things you mentioned, but I think also just, just in general, just for the community to know, hey, you know, it's not just us saying we're doing a good job. Somebody else came and looked at what we're doing and said, they're on the right track, they're doing things the right way.
I think just, I agree. I think it helps when you have that, you know, unfortunately it's not there across the board, but I think it, you have this third party. And why does it matter? Because people who live in town, who don't live in town, unfortunately would be a real social future. And so we, and we're judgmental. And, and while we can sit here and say we do good things, you know, you need that, I think you need that objective perspective to, to aid in what it means. I mean, it drives me nuts, you know, when other school districts, you know, you hear about whatever, the number of kids and whatnot to whatever school, the attention they get, just because of this arbitrary, you know, how the schools are seen by the universities or whatever. And it's like, and we can choose too. It's like playing, playing a game. It's, it's what was supposed to be.
I just think it's going to incur, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I think probably, I'm looking at it as a point of, we need to establish ourselves first. I think that's a much larger leap for us to go after. I think if we work with a media approach, that eventually will get us into that arena. That's, I think that's how we should, how we consider tackling that. I think we're trying to jump into that arena so right away and not knowing what's in there, with a lot of faulty, faulty issues that comes with that as well. I think basically the media, the media approach is, that's to build ourselves first and then enter the game.
And then come out of nowhere and be highly ranked. I think, you know, or you can show, because we actually wait well. I mean, if you actually look for whoever has, there was some state ranking that just came out in the summer, but I would was, and we were actually, you know,
Did they do?
Out of 700 districts, you know, when the state, you were actually like 100.
We're in number three in the best school districts of the year.
Yeah. And we were like, you know,
The snitch.
We do well. You know, so part of it for me is like, you know, they can see us climbing with their faulty or flawed measures.
But you also have to look at it this way too. I think like to Glenn's point, we need to start getting this information out. Colleges, when they, you know, if you start talking about the schools that our kids are going to, getting accepted to,
Right.
they're not very much different
No, they're not.
than some of these other greater schools. So if you get that information out, the other part is all colleges, because one high school could, you know, give a child a 94 and another high school could give them an 84. They actually leveled the playing field so to, so that the 84 in one school district is the same as the 94 in another school district. So if our kids are still getting in, it, there is a, there is a balancing and there's a ranking that the colleges and universities are doing. And obviously, we're not falling that far behind. I'm not saying we're perfect. We've definitely got work to do, but I don't think we have all our answers yet. And I, I really think that if we start getting out, yeah, our kids are doing this, you know, out of our top 10, 80% of these kids are athletes and excel at academics. Because it's, it's kind of an amazing thing when you, when you look at our top 10, because, you know, and it goes back to, you know, an old time thing, oh, you know, you've got your Jocks, you've got your this, you've got your that. It's not that way here, which is a good thing. But I think, you know, if, through the help of BoSies and we start really working on this media plan, because I think we're going to jump in the, jump in the gun going a little too fast right now.
I feel like using a ranking is like the lazy man's way out. So if you see the ranking and you like it, So if you see the ranking and you like it, you're like, okay, good. If you see the ranking and you don't like it, our schools suck, this is awful. But I feel like we're trying to get parents to be more actively learning about the schools by putting all this stuff up. I mean, people just don't want to have to work to find anything. I mean, people are still asking where the lunch menu is. It's just, they need it to, you know, to be fed to them, so let's feed it to them. But I just feel like you have a ranking, you lose half the people, good or bad, and then there's no, like, active involvement in like, oh my God, we had a wrestling state champ or the Valt victorious going to Yale or whatever it is. I mean, some people will look at both, but I feel like we have to make this, that it's really important. There's so much good stuff going on in technology in our schools. People need to know that we're out ahead.
Right. So do we want to revisit this next year then?
Well, that's what I would consider.
Maybe we could even re-discuss it in January. I mean, it doesn't need, you know, because again, things change over time. But I think we really do need to focus right now on this media plan and make it good and make it the best that we can possibly make it. And revisit again in January and say, okay, well, how's this plan going? What do we need to do? You know, are we ready to start putting, you know, putting ourselves out there? Because rankings are, you know, I mean, they're important because people do look at them, but I think we need to worry about what's in our own backyard first.
Well, I guess we can get to a point, like if you're, you know, people like something or whatever and they type in Brewster, you know, the persons that are coming up are all these states are media. So as people search, I mean, they could just go to US News or they could type in Brewster and then what's popping up is, you know, whatever it is. And that starts sending a message in itself as to how, you know, things are perceived. I mean, yes, we can revisit this next month.
When do you have to, like, when do the rankings, do they come out at all different times?
No, it's every year.
Do you put yourself in the mix when you have to?
I mean, you can, you know, with the NISH, you can do it anytime. As I said, with great schools, they do look at other factors. They have these sub ratings that include, as I said, test scores, student progress, academic progress, Edwin College readiness, advanced course rating, discipline attendance. So it gets a little more extensive.
And for US, do we know about?
US News and World Report, you know, there's so much.
I know they do have a cutoff. Yeah, they do have a cutoff.
And, you know, that's a whole, that's a management in of itself, you know. And as I said, there are schools that do all that, they submit it all and they don't get in, you know, because you can't, everybody can. But, you know, it's not the only metric. I mean, systems are trying to move away from these, as you said, you know, these, you know, these easy ways of looking at, assessing the district. So, but you know what, we can have our media person help us, you know, look at this and see where, you know, where it pays off to.
That's a good point. I mean, we can use the person we ultimately hired to help us navigate, you know, look at other people, look at the rank, look at what's happening, why they're getting where they're getting, and help us manage that better so that we put it in. It reflects more appropriately to what it is. Some people literally, like when I see ratios, you know, you know, people in other districts, they really don't have 14 kids in classroom. But the way, it's not about that, it's about the ratio and then they'll just have their teachers who also have another title be part of the nuts. So, I mean, these are things that might, that might be in a strategy. We can look at it and if.
Because the media plan has got to build our image.
All right, so let's.
It's really, that's what it's about.
Let's come back to that one then. And then as far as our four goals, some things that I just had come up with, just kind of thinking, you know, along these lines was, again, I know some of these things are later in the agenda, so it's all going to kind of come together, not exactly the way we've broken it down. But I also put down community forums and perhaps, you know, a goal for us to be, put out this sort of a surveys or monthly, I'm not quite sure what, to, and they could be very specific on our end, what we want to achieve. You know, something the person could be, what do you want in a community forum? So that, you know, hopefully satisfies people in that day. But they're topics that are relevant, maybe, you know, in the fall, I'm thinking about launching up a parent or maybe, you know, they're not thinking about parenting. So it's more strategic and appropriate. People show up at different times of the year. We've already had certain conversations and then it's not aware. So we could be more strategic in how we present our information. And to do community forums where, you know, it was at, you know, more than, you know, through board people. So that there could be that dialogue. We don't, our board meetings, you know, again, it's supposed to be comments, public comments. So we have to really get back to what a board meeting, how it should be structured. But we need to create an area where the public can communicate with the board and more of an exchange. And so these community forums could be that type of outlet. You know, it often has been, you know, value of the district doing that. But if the board is taking the lead on some of them throughout the year for very purpose specific reasons, I think that could be effective for us. Maybe it's even a forum right before the meeting is coming up. So that's where everyone can come and have that exchange. And the feedback can come back to the whole board from that exchange. But just, we need to put some solution and I thought that would be one of the goals we could try to come up with and what that would look like. The, I had, you know, through C19, the different, again, I was looking at building relationships. You know, because in the past, I think there's been a different type of strategy in place. And for me, yes, there's a structure and there is, you know, what is it, our outline of how the district is situated. But when you have very strong lines in the sand, there isn't communication that can happen that's effective between all the different pieces of the puzzle. And I was trying to put the strategies to that. So I had the community forums, I put down C19 to, you know, make sure, because that hasn't been something in the past that we did consistently. And I put outreach, you know, to other, to physically go to different community organizations and have a presence at their meetings and whatever and just allow, you know, reach out and say, would you, if they're not interested in that, interested, we may attempt. And if they do, we can have a few minutes to, nothing binding, it's just kind of an opportunity, again, to reach out to other pieces of the community. And then our, the social media thing, you know, we can figure out how to tackle that. But maybe that can come with the help of our person and how we can legally and correctly put out information to the board. So I just was trying to think of, you know, these four avenues and how we can communicate better and be open to hearing from the different pieces that they participate with. So thoughts on those goals for us? Not really. I mean, we, you know, we talked about it, they came up. It was never committed to them at that point. So we really, it's, it needs to happen every year, it's a discussion like this. We walk away and it's not in motion in place. We really need to have something. It doesn't have to be decided tonight, but we really need to have, is there any consensus on any of these ideas? Does someone have a better idea of what our, you know, four goals should be for the year? They have to align with our district's goals. They all have to beat off each other. And honestly, with any research that I've read, that many trainings have been done, if the board isn't a solid leadership unit, everything fails. And so I wanted, you know, maybe that is a goal, you know, working on our leadership. Maybe we together just do more trainings together and building us up as a team. Maybe that's, that's one of them. And then the other piece can be the community forums and how people, whatever.
On the community forums, what type of discussions would we have? Because I just can't help but think they're, they're going to be, you know, specific questions that board members would not be able to answer about the happenings, you know, the day-to-day happenings of the school. I mean, that's not our job. So then it's going to be like, oh, we can't answer that. I mean, what are we going to be able to talk about?
Well, that's why I was proposing, you know, we could put out a survey. We can figure out what our questions want to be, not tonight, but come up with a survey to the public. You know, the board is looking to have more constructive dialogue with the community. And if those questions come up, then we can say, well, you know, we can take that and that can be another.
Drop that at the next one.
Whatever, right. So we can, just because our board meetings, you know, they, they're not meant to be this dialogue and everyone's angry here, everyone's happy, whatever. It's got to.
Or everyone expecting us to respond on the spot to whatever question they happen to have.
We have to create some other outlet for, if people want to come then, they can come then. I mean, we have to allow for that. It's just going to help diffuse, you know, emotions as they know, aggressively that we can be more productive.
I think three forums that we did have that. I know they were Chris and I think Chris and Brittany. They were specific questions. They were not global. So we just have to be prepared. Fortunately, we created.
I mean, we could make it be, you know, this will be a forum on the strategic comparison plan or IB or, I mean, the budget, I mean, I don't know. They could be very specific to a topic and throughout the year and be very well noticed. And then.
I know, but you, I don't see us being the appropriate people to put on a presentation about IB.
But we have to work with, we have to do it in effort that we do together. Because what's the alternative? They're coming to a meeting and they're going to yell at me anyway.
Yeah, but we have Michelle who can speak to IB there.
Right, but again, they're not allowed, it's not a situation where it's a question and answer period.
Right, but they may have their questions in their head answered by our discussion. I mean, I think that's the idea and I think that's why we tried last year to have more discussion coordinations. Because maybe I'm going to ask a question that five people in the audience also have or, you know, as part of our discussion, that could answer some of the questions.
Then when does the audience get the opportunity to ask the questions?
They ask them at our board meetings every single time.
But they're not, that's, again, we have to change that because that's not a big place to that.
Right.
Rather Kerry's, is communicate some, some way, shape, form, a presentation by an expert in an board meeting. So that would limit that, those individuals getting up, those five individuals, six individuals, ask the question if we're going to already present on the topic, that you give them an, give them the understanding of what their concern may be.
Or maybe they could be, these forums could be, you know, what are your concerns? What types of things, what would you like to see as a presentation at a board meeting? Because, I mean, you know, we've done a bunch of presentations this year and they were all excellent. And they all answered all the questions and they put to bed a lot of issues that, you know, once the questions were answered and people understood, it was like, okay, now I understand and that's fair. So maybe it would be more like an information gathering. I think the survey is a good idea. I just worry about the forums being something where we're presenting as opposed to just come and talk to the board members. We're here. Oh, you have an issue with the lunch program at JFK? You know what I mean. We can bring it back. We can maybe have Kathy Ash do a presentation, something like that.
I mean, unless we ask, well, what are, what are your hot topics? You know, I mean, I'm saying on this survey, I guarantee it's going to be budget. It will be, you know, there will be certain topics that are the hot buttons. It always have been, always will be. And so then it's like, okay, well, you know, we're listening that you want something more specific regarding the budget. But then that gets answered by a series of infographs and, so I'm not 100% sure about these forums. I'm really not. I get inviting the public in to hear their concerns, but then, I, I, I don't know. I just think it's just going to turn into the screaming battle at match.
Does usually, when these presentations happen, is it usually presentation and vote in the same meeting?
Not always, depends, but generally, no, I mean, generally.
Generally.
Some of the presentations didn't even have anything to do with something we were necessarily voting on.
It was like with the scores and, you know, with the, with the test scores and.
And the funding.
Because I think the outreach, whether the information we put out to the community is sort of, this is, this is the stuff you probably don't, these are the rules that we have to go by. I mean, this is how these things work. And to sort of, if we have an issue that we know is potentially going to be a hot button issue or even, even if it isn't, sort of discuss it at one meeting. Let the community have two weeks to digest it, roll it around, send in an email to the board, do whatever they want to do and then potentially, you know, consider the impact of it and then not vote on it for another two weeks. I know you can't do that on everything, but if there's sort of a lag time, instead of, this is what we're talking about, we're having a discussion and by the way, we're going to vote. I think that gives the impression of, well, I can stand up and say something. What's the point? They're already going to vote on it. They've already kind of expected to vote. So sort of try to, sort of just have more time for things and then just push out to people, you know. These are how the, this is how the meetings are supposed to work. This is, this is how we can communicate and the things we can't communicate about and sort of, not necessarily create a new way of talking to people, but just sort of giving people better skills to handle the existing legal time testing way that the boards will operate.
Well, we had discussed doing like at the first meeting, which in my mind, I think of the first meeting as like the first meeting of the school year, of doing like a presentation on what the Board of Education does. Because people think we do a lot of things we don't do. People don't know we do some things that we do. And like explain why we can't discuss this at a meeting, that this is governed by the, you know, not, not like a.
A dry law thing.
A CLE, you know, but just sort of an explanation. And maybe in that you can explain why it's a two-minute or it's a comment period. Because we can't get into this back and forth with one particular person in a, in a meeting and the reasons why. You know, maybe that would.
I think that's a good idea, except I think that assumes that when it comes to the budget time and we're all of a sudden going to have a packed house, that everybody has kind of been at that first meeting, you know.
Right, I mean, also, one of my suggestions was we were going to divine was to include with every, it's always at the front of the auditorium, the, our policy, you know, well, how does a meeting run? It explains it and we can, I think, put, you know, something to your point of the presentation recap, you know, this is, these are the laws or references or whatever, better for standing. And I'd like, you know, to do that, I think it'd be helpful.
Because it isn't that we don't want to answer the question, we're just, sometimes we really want to answer the question.
Just so they go back to the same. Okay, so for example, I'm going to use Victor as an example. When you were trying to explain the, our savings account, you know, we had to find that, that language to use and you were just weren't getting it. So even though you're doing a presentation, if the language is foreign to them because it's very educational or it's very whatever, they're going to still have the same question because they need to explain it a different way. So people are going to walk away still confused, even though it was fully presented, not having full knowledge of it. So that too, people will be frustrated, misinformation. I still think there has to be some sort of place that questions can happen and that we can respond. Working with the district, I mean, forums are part of this, so why can't, you know, a board person just come, where was it, community, you know, whatever, to be part of what the district wants? I was trying to come up with a separate one for board, but fine. If the board doesn't feel that's going to work, then perhaps more people come to, you know, the district ones where there's their Q and A can be there as well. There has to be some other way. We're going to face the same issues all year long who don't want to do the solution. And, you know, we have five hour long meetings every board meeting.
So, this is just my experience, but the town that I work in, when the board has an issue, they usually call them work sessions and they, they'll meet four times a month. Two of them are work sessions and two of them are when they actually take action and actually vote on things. And so people can, it's much more laid back, not the right term, but in the work session where people can just come in and just approach and say, this is my issue, this is what I want to talk about. And they might say, you need to go and talk to this person or that department head or whatever else. Or they'll say, okay, we'll, we'll start working with you on what the plan is going to be to address your issue. But it doesn't go right to a vote, you know, that's, that's sort of a long way out. And I think, I mean, my limited experience so far from being on the other side of the table is that usually when people find out what the rules are, the rules make sense. It's just people thinking, I want to say this and if they're not responding, to Kerry's point, if they're not responding, it's because of some nonsense reason. So the more that we're, I don't want to necessarily, I think it's going to be a struggle too on these forums because that puts, some are all of us, having to be there expecting the community to come in person. I think even, everybody communicates by emailing. community to come in person. I think even, everybody communicates by emailing. If they know what the topics are, have the opportunity to email. We address the fact that we received an email regarding this incident, or did not this incident necessarily, or this issue. And we're taking that under advisement. And I think that potentially starts to open the door to, hey, look, we're not just setting an agenda item, taking a vote, going on. We're actually engaging the community.
Email, right? So what if part of our survey, there's also a...
Do you know?
There's something our...
Oh, like a suggestion box kind of concept.
You know, what's your question, which is, right. And then we can address them at meetings. So, I mean...
I mean, if you had like a Board of Education suggestion box email, and then at the meetings addressed or responded to some of them, depending on the number?
In other words, you know, Mary H., you know, on Brewster Hill, asked a question via email, kind of almost something like that.
Watch what happens.
Yeah. It's a Jerry's problem.
Okay, so how about this? So we can move on from this. So we need to just at least identify what we think our goals should be for the year. Very specific. I had, this is what I had come up with. I mean, does anyone have any response? Could that be working out some better communication strategy? Because conversation is important. We're not going to have that. It's the fact that it's a goal. Just more efficient, better communication as a goal.
Definitely.
Yes? So, and then, you know, we can just say...
And I think, I don't know if it's the same goal or, but also, and maybe this is where the C-19, you mentioned the C-19, like also having better communication, teachers, administrators, whoever else it is, you know.
So again, we're not to figure out what happened, but that would be too. And then what about the, it's been on a to-do list for a few years now, the outreach piece of the non, you know...
Well, that would go to number...
The...
That would go to number five on, on the district goals. I mean, how are you going to get people...
Well, again, we're supposed to align.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. How are you going to get people who don't have kids in the school engaged in what's happening in the school?
Right.
Unless you're going to where they're at.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that could be our third goal. You know, it's just, those are really the three avenues of the district. It's those non-connected entities, school, parents, you know, and you want those three channels of communication. This year, this is what we're establishing. It started, it doesn't have to perfect.
I mean, because potentially what we could do is, if we divide and conquer amongst these groups and just, you know, hi, I'm Diane O'Brien, I'm a board trustee. You know, I'm just here, I just need five minutes of your time. All I want to say is that, you know, if you have any questions, concerns, et cetera, please email the board. And, you know, you will get a response, you know, whatever, in 48 hours or in a week, whatever. And, you know, we will put you in touch with the right person, just, and then leave.
Yeah.
Something like that. I mean, it's just a thought.
Yeah, so we can, we can have follow-up conversations and have us go. I'm, I'm, listen, I put lofty agenda today. You don't get it all. Don't be stressed around the bigger than me. You can always table some things. We'll just go and we'll get what we get. So with that, we did this last year. I thought, you know, it's later down, but the open houses, last year, we went to all the open houses and just introduced ourselves. We all picked a date and just who we are, we meet, you know, we meet whatever, that kind of thing. So...
Have any questions, email the board. That was, that was the spiel that we all gave pretty much last year.
We, our video type was doing that. I don't know if you heard any of us doing that last year. I think it was our first time. Do you want to do that again?
I think it's good.
You know, BF, because they do everything with BF, college and school. Okay. So I have a date that went through this, she got the dates for that. So this could be actually quick. We could probably do this in email. I have building visits down here and organizing our, we started off strong beginning of the year, and then it kind of, we did what, I don't know if, what makes more sense from your perspective, Valerie, for us to have a good understanding that we can, you know, communicate back out at our meetings. And because there's the learning walks, that there's a training for that. So is it, is that a better way for the board to be involved, or just the other way, which is going to the classrooms and visiting on those organized tours? Which, or both? I mean, what do you think?
Actually, that was one of the questions that I had. You know, we kind of began to call these field trips. So we organized to, to go, you know, whether it was visiting K-5 classrooms, or coming to see the STEM, cook down courses. I think those are valuable, but obviously not everything can make them. And maybe it is that, you know, there's a, you know, a group that can do something first semester, another group of board members can do something second semester, so that it is, it's not everybody at the same time that's capable there at the same time. But if we can do that, you know, planning, that would be helpful. And it may be easier to, you know, just a bit more to...
And just see things in action that were, we've implemented and how it's playing out and working. So maybe that's, makes more sense for, for the work we're doing.
Maybe if it's, you know, a half a day, so at least it's, we get to three different things. You know, so in that way, it's not like then another, you know, we have to choose another day for some other content area, some other school. So we can do that, which would make a lot of sense. It would be more efficient and then it's done, you know. So that, you know, that group of board members, that three or four group of board members have seen, you know, the three or four priorities in the school district. And then, you know, the next semester, the set, the next set of board members. I mean, it would also be pretty cool if you had an audience of students.
That's a great idea.
They actually have a whole lot of insight about what's going on.
I think that's a great idea.
But you not think, they know, they know everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For students, that's bad. Let them have their comments.
So then, so maybe each semester, throw out some dates and we can just, who can, you know, first come, first served.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you want to talk about community forum? That would be the way is with the kids. They will... Because they're living it, and they know what they like and what they don't like. And even the littles will be able to tell you. It was like when we went into the Project Lead the Way, and they're like, oh my gosh, next to lunch, this is my favorite thing. Or this is, you know, I used to hate math and I love it now, or whatever. I mean, we heard so many comments like that. What's working, what's not for them? You know, or, and maybe they might say, you know, well, my teacher's stressed out, or my teacher, you know, but I know my, my friend in the other classroom, their teacher's awesome. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm making stuff, you know.
They only can tell you how he cheated.
You know, I'm just thinking maybe...
I mean, one student told us how he cheated. And he had no problem with, you know, knowing that we weren't going to tell his mom.
But I'm thinking that might be a way. Because it's engaging them, and it's engaging them early.
Okay. Would it be like a forum type thing?
I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I use that concept of forum, but...
Yeah.
We worry about, but I think that might not be a...
And so then, so good. So Valerie will send us dates. And, you know, according to what, how, what makes sense for how the year is progressing and what's happening. And then whoever can make the dates will come with a team, and there'll be another year.
Do those visits include the high school?
Oh, they have.
Because I feel like it's always in the elementary and...
I saw this beginning of last year.
Yeah, we did high school.
We did high school, I mean, we did the STEM, we did the middle school.
That's right.
That's right. Middle, middle school, we, we were at, we were at, I mean, I know I've been to all four buildings at one point, you know, and then going to the other school, like when we went to Carmel for Project Lead the Way, that was awesome.
It was.
So one of the quick things, a board self-evaluate. So there's many instruments that we have. So when, once we kind of get working to help later on our goals, we can check in with ourselves on how we're doing. One of the things I wanted to ask the board is, in that process, what are your thoughts on asking the community and staff on how we're doing? You know, because generally, the board self-evaluates. But putting out that same instrument, you know, NISDA puts one out, it's just very, we're important to, and putting it out there and seeing what we get back. And, I mean, just to be something that we can decide, you know, mid-year, we want, just something to think about down the road. That'll be covered. I think, I had social media and board newsletter. So I had the, that, the others one. But, you know, I think those things will come out after tomorrow's meeting, and who we're using, and how we can coordinate our efforts with those pieces.
Well, and you were talking about like, and maybe this wasn't exactly what you were talking about with like, social media and Facebook and how to get information out there. I mean, every, everything that, whatever, if we vote on the media planner, everything that they're preparing and putting on the website or whatever they're doing, it should be on the Board of Education. We should have a Board of Education webpage, Facebook page that should go out.
That, and also our webpage on the, our website, half of it's the top. And then whenever I scroll, I can't see things. I think it needs to be worked a little bit. But on our page, we need information that we want the public to access.
Right there on the front page.
So that's another thing. I actually have it as a suggestible webpage, you know. So we can again, talk about that later, being, whatever we have. There's time to figure that out. That I agree absolutely.
Those are...
Yeah. So some of these things probably fall right into that. I just want to get through some of the real quick and easy ones, and then back to some of the more, another policy one. But, so just to skip down, so West, Westchester Public School Wars Association has a legislative, legislative action committee that meets monthly-ish depending. And I emailed them for information on what's going on in the world. The board president is supposed to report back to the board and the community on what's happening out in the world of politics and related education. Is anybody dying to get on that monthly drive around state meeting? Because we're more than welcome to just kind of, but I'm throwing that there because it's open to anyone as well. But just wondering.
Are you planning on going?
Well, yeah. It's my responsibility, but it's open to anyone who wants to also go on a board. So if anyone else is really drawn to it.
Well, you might maybe join you, you know, here or there, but I can't commit to.
That's a meeting of this way, travel.
Yes. So they pick different school districts. We're not one of them. I don't know that we've ever been with. But they'll go to Wright, I can travel across one. I looked at, I did the whole calendar back in my...
Doc Berry.
Yeah. Whatever. But they're all over. And you meet at...
But they're local. Because you said it's western.
Western, I think it is.
Westchester Park. So it's all over.
But it's all local westchester, really.
So, yeah. So, yeah, each month is in either school or district office or whatever, maybe location. And one of them's at Bozeman. So, yeah, they're kind of all over. And I just mix it up and discuss. Like the next one's happening at the end of September, and it's about, because then this convention's coming up and those resolutions. So what happens at that meeting is they go through all the resolutions that will be potentially presented at the convention that I will have to vote on on behalf of us. And there was the resolutions that go, that NISDA will fight, they're like our lobbyists, they fight, you know, in all of it for us, whatever. So we'll go over all those, and we'll report back to the district. And then you guys tell me how you want me to vote on a voting day of the month. So no one's jumping out yet. We're all ready.
Well, you need, but do you, you need a backup in case you can't make it, or Kerry can't make it.
Volunteering?
I'm thinking I'm being voluntold. But we'll go with, I'll volunteer.
Okay, so perfect.
To be the backup, backup. Unless someone else wants to do it.
No, it kind of makes sense though, because you just like put it down.
Why doesn't everyone go with you at one?
We can do that if people want.
That would be not a bad idea.
I can check in if someone's available at Tuesday night, if not...
Oh, yeah, at night?
Yeah, our night, 7:30, 7:45, July 15. But yeah, so...
So maybe that, that would actually, you know, whatever, let's just say, you know, next meeting October, blah, blah, blah. They're looking to discuss blank. Anyone else available?
Okay. Another quick one. We've had lovely, like, some kind of thing. So...
Such a good one.
Whenever someone, you know, has a baby or something, or even spent condolences to someone in the district, we have one person who's kind of designated to take on that role. And Kristen's not here, so I feel bad. We might volunteer for a couple of things. But takes that on and, so that you know it's your responsibility to send out the card to someone.
Might send out the card, or send flowers or a donation on behalf of the board.
So, I can ask Kristen if she wants to help us out with that one. I'm looking to go up there. She says they'll figure it out. If that's another thing. I'm not going to put you down in that right now. Another, I guess this can be kind of quick. The, so the SROs, when we were deciding some years ago on using the SROs, one of the, one piece of the presentation was that they can also be used to talk to students about different topics, and we can utilize them for different things. But, and it's been going back also some years. They used to give us a report of what they did, but it was really, I mean, it just says, it repeated the same thing. We spoke to wherever the student population is at the building, monthly, there was no detail to it. And I thought, we want them doing their job and being prepared, God forbid anything ever happen. But we do have a phenomenal resource in them. And I know, like, for example, and I forget his name, but at Wells, he now left, right? But he was doing great things in that building. And I thought, perhaps we could model what he was doing in the other buildings, so that all the students really get to know who their SRO is or the SPO. And, you know, do those educational pieces that, that all students take with them. You know, we have, because I know that we, schools have presentations that are put on for different topics throughout the course of year, for health or whatever, at-risk type things. But I don't know. I just, I wanted to see, you know, how else can we, if, how else can we utilize them educationally if we felt we wanted to do that? I'd like to see that, but I know some people feel like, well, if they're too distracted with that, then they're not prepared for something happening.
But who's going to prepare the curriculum that they're going to allegedly?
Well, that was the funny, I mean, I think he's gone now too. He was at JFK. He had his masters in education. He's gone, right?
Charlie went to...
Summer. But he was, actually, he was, he was like, oh, I could something together. But again, not that you're a little higher, because the county won't do it.
Well, the challenge is this. More and more, the SROs are needed in schools, you know, to deal with certain issues. I mean, whether it is a youngster who needs to be taken to Clutton Hospital because she, you know, was thinking about committing suicide. SROs are the ones who never stood a student. Others that are in school, yes, are, has to take them to Clutton Hospital. And we have that more than not. At the K-5, I mean, at the, at the K-2 level, there's a lot newer of, 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 like, being in the classroom if you can. You know, so I think you get a lot more there. You know, since Benny hasn't been there long, he just arrived at C E Star. I think that, you know, the challenge is probably because of the way that building is organized, you know, there's a sense of meaning, some presence. And that's one of the complaints that, you know, we heard from the schools, there's where, you know, where would anyone be? So that again, that in and of itself is such a terror. Benny doesn't drive a patrol car. You know, so, you know, that was one of the other factors, you know, when we were debating whether to have an SRO or an SC. The SROs have, you know, drive a patrol car, but the SPOs don't. So I think there's a desire to have Benny present, more present than being in classrooms. At Wells, that's where a lot of the driving to Clutton County Hospital, Clutton Hospital are. And at the highest peer, Mike, Matt is involved with something all the time. So, and he watches all the cameras, there are hundreds, I mean, there's probably about a hundred cameras in this building, you know, running around the campus. So he spends his time watching cameras.
Interesting where it needs to.
Mike spends some time here as well, Wells. Because that's where he can see where children are, that covers his kids. So that, so it's a, it's a real, you know, it's a dilemma in terms of, you know, what would you have a meeting in class? Maybe you take Mike, for example. You know, if Mike had to take students, you know, take a student to the hospital, stay with them until the parent arrived, if he were supposed to, if he was supposed to be teaching something, who's going to then substitute for him? You know, so it becomes disjointed, you know, fragmented when, you know, he's not very keen to. And they're also not, I mean, there are some that can teach and there are some that don't want to teach.
It was part of, it was part of the presentation of what SRO period, yes.
Right, but you see, when they, but when, I think how it morphed from what it started as to what it has become is completely different. You know, unfortunately, because initially, yeah, they were a resource within the school, but now it's, they really are policing. Yes, I got an email the other day from a gentleman who asked, well, you mentioned that, you know, Benny carries a weapon. What kind of weapon? And he wanted me to say it was a gun. And, you know, I said it was a firearm, saying this issue to, you know, the sheriff's department, gets involved in a piece there. People want to know that the SROs are active and, you know, where they need to be. That's, and there's a fear that people have. So I do think that if we pull them into classrooms, we're going, and I think we're going to start with some of our parents being very concerned about safety.
Do they have a presence like, like when the kids are getting off the bus in the morning? Are they outside? High fiving the kids, like, do the kids know them? Because I feel like, well, it would be nice if they put on a presentation and everything. I just feel like if the kids felt like they knew him and that maybe it would be someone else, you know, that they could go to like. I feel like they should be out there. I feel like they should be, know some kids' names and.
They do, they do, I mean.
And it's not, at least every kid should know their names.
Benny will be that kind of person, you know, that people will see him. Mike Newton, again, he's starting, he's one of the first SROs who's going to the classrooms. You know, Matt, just evidenced on, you know, they, I mean, just based upon the evidence, the number of students who go to him independently.
Is that a high school?
That's a high school. You know, so, you know, you gotta know him to go to him. And feel comfortable when you go to him, he's going to help you out. And Brian, he's, you know, he's out there in the mornings at.
Do they present at the beginning of the school year or like to the whole student body or to different classes in some way?
They do different things. They do different presentations. Now, Matt's going to make a presentation to the board on September fourth about this new approach of, you know, rather than having children hiding in a room, you know, when there's, you know, someone who was trying to get into a room. He's going to make a presentation on, I forget the afternoon, Victor. Basically, where his children are fighting that, you know, with the, with the guns. Because that works with a secondary level, you know, so when they're in the K five level. He does a lot of that kind of work. He's really, and that is really a first response, you know, case to go to person. You know, for anything that, you know, we need to know about, you know, or any questions that we have, he's right on it. You know, they're, you know, they've been extraordinary actually. You know, and even if, you know, I hate to, you know, I hate that Matt, that Mike Newton is gone, but, you know, just in, since I've been here, you know, every year we've done, someone's been switched out. They're great, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay, I get it.
I think, so, we sent our youth officer in to teach seventh graders. She goes in one day a week, bounces around. So she sees all the seventh graders, not through the entire year, but, and she does that. And it's amazing, the connection that they build in that classroom. To the point that, you know, I think these kids need somebody who they can talk to. I think some kids will see the officer and say hello. And that builds enough of a relationship that they'll break it down. But when the kids get older, I think, you know, knowing that person on a more personal, you know, knowing that officer on a more personal level than just, I see them in the hallways is, is really beneficial. I totally get the community concerned about the security in the building. But I think like, if we have, I'd rather have an SPO watching cameras than taking the SRO and him watching cameras. You could have anybody from each cameras, as long as they know what they're looking for. I, I think the SRO, I mean, and I don't know enough about their schedule. If they have a post and they're supposed to stay by the front door and that's what they do. But if, if they're allowed to move around the building, you know, anything can, we always expect everything's going to come through the front door. But if we're not putting somebody there to stop that, then he could potentially be anywhere. So if he's in a classroom, I don't know that necessarily automatically we're saying, well, we're leaving some kind of vulnerability open because he wouldn't necessarily have been there anyway. And I think connecting with the kids, being able to talk to them, not just, hey, what's up? But, you know, giving them the opportunity to really get to know these guys, especially as you said, you know, the few guys that I've met. There's a vetting process they go through at the sheriff's department before they decide if they're going to put in, not that I'm just put the guy who rents a lot of tickets and make them a SRO. So I, I think that the more that we can have them in classrooms with full consideration to the security in that part of it.
What does the woman do that you refer to, what does she do?
She does mostly drug and alcohol awareness. But she says, you know, I start off with the topic and it's pretty wide open. You know, it's not.
She doesn't also work in that district? She's just, she's just a detective?
No, she's our youth officer. She's a detective. So she handles any of the juvenile cases that come in. And then she also takes other cases as necessary.
Is that an extra expense to the, that's the leadership?
Not the school, but she's, she, again, she's only in there once, sometimes two days and just for one year. We don't have an SRO. But we have seen, I mean, she goes out to a ball game, there's any kind of school event and she gets mobbed, but it's mobbed. To the point where administrators have been like, wow.
I don't know if Putnam County has one.
What?
The sheriff, does the Putnam County sheriff have a youth officer? Do they have?
They, well, they have.
I don't know if they do now, just that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they'll call it something, they've got somebody who handles juvenile cases. You know, there's, that's a special sort of certification training.
Right, yeah, no, no, I know.
But, you know, like you said, she's a detective. She does other things and we just sort of put her in as much as possible because we do see that as the role which the kids are responsible. So it's definitely not a criticism of how it is that they're not in the classrooms, but I think there's definitely added benefit. And I don't feel, unless there's more of the, their job duties that I don't understand. I don't feel like necessarily we're making school less safe by having it inside the building. And the other question I would ask is, so if they don't pull somebody else in, if a kid has to go to the hospital, the SRO comes out of the school?
If a child says he or she's going to harm themselves, they are, they're required to drive them to the hospital. There's a new substitute SRO, so that they just expose that.
Yeah, now with the SPO, we just have like the Brewster deputy.
Well, somewhere will be, I mean, that's the challenge. So when Mike was, you know, so old, you know, covering both CD Star and Wells, that's what would happen. You know, Matt would not come over, Brian couldn't come over. So we would be without anyone. So, you know, and actually Benny could not take anyone to the hospital. It would only be an SRO who could deliver any of this to the flight car.
Well, now, it would normally be him there.
But they're transporting it in ambulances, right?
It's like.
So are they responsible? I mean, it wouldn't be another unit.
I don't know. I do know that.
Like Eric, that's what Eric's getting at.
Normally what I do is, you know, you see other sheriffs who are in the Brewster area, call, taking the SRO out, you'd have that guy coming in.
I think they see it as a priority. If a child says he or she's going to do something to themselves and to themselves, I don't think they're going to, you know, I think priority is to, in my, in my understanding, is to get the child to the hospital as soon as possible.
And I think they, like, we have three other, it's not like we have one on campus, there's three others to cover. I mean, it's not ideal, but that's.
I mean, unless, I mean, I'm just gonna venture a volunteering, a voluntold. If potentially you could sit in with Valerie and the sheriff as to what we can and cannot do with our SROs. In the, in the sense of, because, all right, why can't some, why can't there be a handoff at the door? I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be Mike that's taking this kid to the hospital. Why can't the patrol car that happens to have this area, the general area, why can't that person take over? Because you are now, and again, I mean, this is, you have one child who's potentially going to harm themselves at the extent, now you're, you're leaving another several hundred kids open to a potential problem. It's, it's a problem. So I don't know how that conversation needs to, you know, but I think there's holes in the system.
I think if we approach it like in terms of just strengthening the work that's being done. I mean, they're.
Again, I don't mean to throw you under the bus, but I think, because you're the one that has the better.
Why don't we just ask?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because they're, the SRO program has been around, but there's always room for improvement. Like you said, he's got ideas that he's looking at doing from the high school to present. I think there's always room to just improve in a manner of things. And as things are discovered, it may be helpful for them, they may reconsider that, you know. I mean, I don't know, but.
I mean, as I said, we're pretty perfect. But, you know, I certainly have Carrie, not Harry, Captain Tompkins to come in and talk to us about, you know, what they can, what they have a question to answer in Haverford. And he's, again, another very user-friendly.
I mean, if it's security related, we could do an executive session on that if there was. Security can say, he didn't want to discuss, and we can even do that and have a discussion like that. Go from there.
I mean, I, I remember at our, at our safety presentation last spring, having SROs there to actually speak to specific things is pretty helpful. And that really did lower the pressure, I think, for a lot of people. So we, I think half of that board meeting would be, you know, also helpful so that people did understand, you know, what it is, you know, what they can and can't do and see some of the issues, you know, we can give them some, you know, some point, you know, some topics that we want them to address specifically.
I mean, we could be with him first perhaps, an exec, because I'm not sure. I want to ask a question on safety and we're not getting an answer. We could hash that out. And then from that, put together a presentation of what would be best for them to present to the public.
You know, that would be fun.
I just think we open ourselves up to a big liability if that officer leaves the school. I mean, all these incidents are calculated and you, you don't even know if that one child's part of it, knows routine, gets the officer off campus and all of a sudden is part of another plot with his friends. I mean, we can, you cannot, if our goal is to have that officer there as security, you, you can't leave a school unsecure.
Yeah, so let's, let's do, let's have a whole security discussion and exec with that.
Probably better, yeah, to do that, that conversation and exec. Because the last thing you want is, because parents will hit the ceiling if they realize that.
Um, but you know, also the fact is that there may be, let them explain it. There may be certain restrictions or whatever. And then from that, we can create a public presentation.
Right.
That'll be helpful, so. Okay, so two last things for me. We, I cut out a bunch because I mushed it all together. Trying to help us get it. So the two other things were the board agenda. So we already discussed including the policies and they're here. They're in that folder you guys brought when you came in. Yeah. So, I mean, it can't be, there's many things in here. Hold on. Regular, so twelve thirty, regular board meetings and rules.
Now, these particular policies are packaged together just to review them?
Well, yes, I want, so, there's a couple of things we're going to touch upon real quick in here. I just wanted to check through real quick. Okay, so the only policy in here that I'm saying is twelve thirty, right? Is that the one that also talks about the two minutes? No.
Yes.
That's quote, in quote thirty. Okay, so it would be just that policy. Attached, it's just my suggestion, attached to the agendas. When the agenda's like this, you know, sitting up front and we grab something before they go in, you see what it is, that policy would also be attached to every time, every packet. And perhaps an additional something that I put together reflecting, you know, school education law and what we're bound to do to help. And so, you know, when I have to explain, I'm sorry or whatever, you'll please refer if you grab the thing outside and explain it in more detail. So, I mean, we can do a representation, but then every meeting, you know, it goes first to that. But this basically gives people a way to have our policy as well as, you know, again, something reflective put together that just talks a little bit more about education law and, you know, what we're bound to, like, I have to do, you know, I have to run the whole team. So thoughts on that? Yeah, okay. And then the other question was, on the board agenda, does anyone have thoughts on changing anything in the structure of it? I mean, generally it follows, help me out. Who's rules of law? Yeah. So that's basically the structure of it. The one question I had is regarding board comments and public comments. So we do allow at times during the year, if, for example, it's a day where the presentation happens same day as it's opened, where that just may be unaffordable due to whatever. So for those particular days, we have allowed right before the board engages in this discussion, the public to have its opportunity to comment. So that is kind of, it's an unwritten rule. We kind of just decided beforehand we would do that. So I guess one question is, I think we should, do we want to continue with that? Because I would like to add that language somewhere, at least in our board manual. Perhaps in my, you know, page of written rules to the public.
At the board's discretion, they can engage in.
That discussion will happen, yeah, yeah. Public comment will occur prior to the blank.
I mean, I'll find the language, but I would want to put that. So you're not, every time we're voting on every action item, you're not going to be commenting on everything. But if it's one that, you know, whatever, you know, they come up this past year, where it was the same day, the role was, the discussion happened, was, we heard the public. But I would explain that somehow, like, on those particular action items. Are we still all okay with that happening? I don't understand what I'm explaining.
I mean, I think I would go a little bit farther and try to let people know that it's our intent to always hear the public comments before we make a vote. Listen, just going through tomorrow's agenda, there's a ton of stuff on there and no one's going to comment about it.
But I don't, I do not think we should get into having public comment for every.
No, no. So that becomes a question of regarding the agenda. You know, we follow the order of business because that's what has been outlined in the world. I mean, we could, it just throws off the whole meeting. Public comments at the end, because it's our meeting, we do our business and then comments at the end. You know, we could perhaps to help, we won't know what necessarily is coming up. I was going to suggest moving like more remarks of public comments to a different side on the agenda. I mean, it might be too necessary for the public comment at the beginning. Do you, do you want to comment on, for example, this is the agenda. This is just a thought, you don't have to do this. And there could be public comment before the action items on any action item below. For, that's it, comment first, before the whole action item section. Only on these things. And then, and there's still public comment on whatever.
How do you pick and choose?
We would, if it was, if there, if anything is listed in our action items and you actually vote on, so that they be given activity, stick only on those things.
Probably be voted on.
Prior to us voting on the whole section. And then at the end, public comment in general.
You then, I think that opens up the floor, not that it opens up the floor, probably, but then you get people who basically say what we were going to say. If we don't get a chance to say, to have our conversation and sort of let the public know sort of where we're going. I think if we have first, then potentially you might cut people off who say, ah, it's. I think if we have first, then potentially you might cut people off who say, "I was gonna say that, now I guess I don't have to." You know what I mean? Like, if people look down the list and go, "I want to comment on three and seven," and yet they're saying the same things that we were gonna say anyway, then we're just wasting time.
Right.
Because then they're kind of doing our job. So I think we need to make our comments first.
But then that would mean, we're not...
But the problem is, is then the vote issue.
Right, then you're getting into any comments for each item the whole way through. So I think then instead, let's just stick to the way we have it now, and if there's, you know, big things. I mean, generally, we present prior, big things, and we're devoted on in the future. We can just keep the structure we have now, and decide for each agenda which things will open up to public comment before the vote.
Because for the most part, ninety percent of the stuff, it really doesn't matter. There's obviously the budget, which is a huge thing every year, so...
Well, then maybe what Eric says is right. What if we did it for each item, knowing that nine out of ten items, no one cares about? Because they're just not that controversial. I don't know. What I don't like is that when we, we have been allowing comment, and then we're discussing it, and then it's back to comment. Like, our discussion needs to be, I want to hear what people have to say, but once that's done, now it's our turn.
We're saying that we talk first.
Right, so we would say...
Do our discussion and then say, "Are there any other comments on this particular issue?" Before we actually go to vote, if it's one of those heavier comments.
But then what if it's not? Then we are picking and choosing?
Well, that's what we've been doing.
I mean, you can introduce it and then say, and just kind of like in that sort of routine that you're gonna develop for every single action item. You go through the whole public comment, nobody stand at the microphone, you know, we can just sort of bond. I mean, assuming the microphones are now in the crowd as opposed to...
Yeah. Alright, so as far as then keeping the agenda the same, does the board, does everyone like... So one of the things, I know the board president's supposed to report on the political environment of things. You know, I know Steve often, he had his style, it's not mine. You know, I really feel like I would just would comment if I had something to report on, like Valerie and everyone else reports on something. So unless I have something to report on, I really don't have to comment. So I was actually thinking of, you know, putting myself right with comments with the board. But I don't know. So we could just keep the agenda the way it is, and, you know, if I seem to report on in the beginning, I will, but if I have regular board, because I want to be more, you know, part of the conversation. I don't, I mean, Steve managed to different, he had a different style, but I have other things that I'd like to also bring up and comment on. So I'll just do that in the section of board remarks with everyone else, and I think that can solve that problem for me.
What, suppose, what kind of suggestion you made earlier? Suppose we do have a site or a place where people can suggest any of their questions? Wouldn't that be a great place that the board, you know, president of comments, answers some of those questions?
True, true, okay, so then...
Maybe use that to...
Yeah, so we can leave the structure as is, and then we can just kind of fine tune how we'll handle the action item section.
One other idea, given that we know the board, you know, the board meetings are set, and you can pretty much organize the agenda the way you want to, if you have items that you know are going to be, you know, generated out of interest. Strategically position those at a particular board meeting, so that people have enough fans to notice, you know, you know, we push that out in the board, or put, you know, have that as part of the board's Facebook account or wherever it happens to be, that these three items will be discussed at the, you know, blah, blah, blah board meeting. You know, please send us your thoughts and concerns, or, you know, this is the time, kind of get some information for that. So, I mean, we do know that, and there are a lot of things that do happen where there, you know, we have some knowledge that's going to occur. I mean, that could help. You know, some people can get upset, you know, if you present, you know, where you're gonna have a comment at the board meeting, but that comment really won't lead to anything, and that could annoy people. And so, I mean, maybe if they, I mean, some people will be fine with a comment, but others will want that comment to result in a conversation that we consider would hardly happen. So, that's just, that's just a...
Yeah, and I imagine it's, you know, comes to me, I don't know.
Some people get a little, I mean, that would go a long way. We don't have a lot of those where people get annoyed, but when they do, it just, you know, poisons the well. So we can, you know, if there's some, if there are items that we know we can strategically, super strategically place on an agenda item later on, or even pause it, and push it to the next board meeting, and we can then go in a forum or some kind of other board session or whatever.
And those types of things, too, we can preface the discussion by saying, "We previously discussed this one." Because we're often accused of, this is the first time where we all know it's not the first time it's been discussed. It's been discussed multiple times. So if we can preface that by saying, you know, you know, "This was previously discussed in April."
I think that'll be one of the, you know, so we have the whole external piece, which has been bothering me for over six years now, that, you know, I've been saying since day one, I want to get us to cover, like, the times, how great we are at Brewster, and yet this year has not been the way I want it to be, because we're so awesome. But anyway, we are, it's just, you know? But also internally with our media person, that could be another thing to utilize every, I'm gonna say, "This is the discussion time, it is happening," you know, so it wasn't April fifth, it was, you know, this August day.
Well, and even if we did a Facebook page, you could put a link to the meeting, you know, so it's all right there. Everybody can find it, hear what's been said, if they want.
So, so two more things. So one is, this one's pretty quick and easy, is just part of this with communication. And so our board manual, I actually did bring copies for everyone if they want, just to look at it. But I, as I looked through it, I thought we can improve on the language. I mean, I made the copies, we'll take them, you can read them. Basically, the language in here for how, for us to communicate, and, you know, each year, we look at it to make sure that we're all on board with how we're gonna communicate internally and externally. And so far for externally, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails. Does anyone have any suggestions or constructive criticism of me, you know, on how I'm handling the emails to the public? Or, you know, there are, I try to catch them all, I think I do, you know, I reply to them in the way I can best. Does anyone have any suggestions for me or thoughts on how I knew that? Is it so far so good?
I think that's very responsive and right.
Okay, so that, and then the other piece is internal of us. So it's all covered, were there enough copies that I have? They, there's, I need to know where... What am I saying? You have it, oh, good. So, basically, so media, I mean, I know I sent out an email a couple of times. Basically, just refer anyone back to me, and it just gives pause, you know, it gives me heads up for me to kind of plug my thoughts on how I get to respond, because I try to assess what the questions would be, and if I need to either consult with the attorneys first, or the valley to make sure that, you know, if I'm not responding, it's representing the district correctly, I want to make sure that that's the case. I don't want everybody to represent us, or speak, because, you know, I speak for us as a group, and I want to make sure that representing us as a group is the best I can do. So, yeah, so I'll just always, I'll either check in with someone, if it's something easy, then I'll just, I'll handle it, but if it's a little weird, I'll check in, which I tried to do. And as far as the internal questions, it's not, as I look through it again, let's see, where is it? I had actually this here, emailing, oh, I don't have my notes, hold on, because I actually wrote down my notes. Give me one second. So, what about emailing? So I, there's some things that needed to be kind of, needed to check in with. Board members should copy their fellow trustees on email communications, including but not limited to all communications with superintendent, staff members, and community. So, that, I think that, I mean, I would like to change the language, and you can tell me what you all think, because this information, you know, it was pulled from a few different locations, the state guidance being its primary focus, and then some other boards work in how they chose to translate that into kind of everyday language. When I look at that, I see it as a little bit problematic, because it has, you know, I don't know, you know, staff and members of the community, but yet in another paragraph, it's just the board president that handles the communication. So I think it's a contradicting statement, and, you know, I'd like to...
I just don't think I should say "should." I think all board members must, we should all be copying on all communications.
Right, and then on all email communications, it kind of, period. But then to clarify that, because that could be communications amongst us. But then I think really the only communication is BOE, and Valerie's on that one. And then, if it's something I can't answer, you know, then Valerie can chime in and then direct us to whichever department, or perhaps she knows the answer. So then rather than emailing the principal, like, a few years ago, I actually emailed Dr. Kestefnova, because Steve told me to. He was like, "Just go ahead on, in Vermont, handle it." And he said, "I'll tell," I think it might have been Tim at the time, which of course he didn't, because he was up in Vermont, or maybe sick, and I got to him first, it was a problem, because everyone didn't know what to do. Like, I was just trying to ask a question of Steve. So, you know, I think, you know, they could be in whatever trainings or meetings or, you know, what have you. So I think that we should change the language on email communication in all communications. I mean, how shall I say that, to just direct it to BOE, right?
Okay, so, in other words, if, and I'm just gonna use an example, if I have a question that, Michelle me, that I know Michelle can answer, we would send it to you, and then...
Just send it to me.
And then, it would go, right, so that in other words, I'm not making Michelle jump through hoops with my question, and then somebody else is making, you know, Victor jump through a hoop, or...
Well, right, essentially, because, because that's what happened when I did that back with Dr. C, because it was, and I don't remember what it was at this point, but we don't know what compass they're in or training or what they're doing, right? And so, and of course, people stop, I feel bad when we do that, when the board reaches out or does whatever we do. And so just to make sure we're not interrupting the functioning of our school days, if it goes, just do it to BOE, and you can say it, you know, Sonia, or, you know, I was wanting to value my bills of health, or, you know, who can answer this question. And then she can either direct it or get the answer, or we can just go from there. And I think that'd be just the most efficient way to handle it. And then wherever it goes, the response will come back to everyone equally. Does that, does that sound fair? Yeah, so as I was looking through this, I realized it was contradictory in what it was telling us to do. Okay, so I'm gonna change, in number three on the next page, I'm gonna get rid of "or," and just put again to the BOE email. Yeah, just, you can address, I mean, how, well, I mean, I guess, what, do you want it to be addressing? And it's not Sonia, it's the board president, whoever in the future. So always, the reason we, you know, this exists is for any future board to maintain transparency and maintain kind of a functioning order of things. What is everyone's thoughts on that?
Can I just be, board member should direct a question regarding district business to boe@brewstercenterschools.org?
Or should change it to "must"?
Yeah, I'll change that to "must." So, well, she'll must, like, yeah.
Not she'll, must.
Will, will direct, but will. Because here it reads to the superintendent or board president using email. So, I mean, is it okay? I mean, Valerie, what are your thoughts, you know, to, you know, being in that role?
I do it already, so it's fine.
Yeah, just "or" is fine, it doesn't matter, okay. And just to review a couple of things, that, it's funny, because I, with Elise, we type this up, but I remind myself of things that I need through it. And just going down to number five, the board member should inform the superintendent and board president of referring to community conversations. The conversation, communication, in case they are also approached, you know, between, again, BOE. So the point is that, you know, to be helpful to us to file issues in the community, or to be able to address them at the next meeting, if you're aware of things, to just, you know, email BOE, and then we can all be informed and help, you know, minimize chaos and confusion, that we know things will not happen in the community. Right, except for confidential things, of course. But that's also in here, like, what does it say? Oh, right, number four. What can I discuss with parents, friends, and other members? Matters discussed, it's like your session or related confidential matters, like personal or student discipline, that's not been discussed with any person, other than the superintendent or no board member. When in doubt, if a matter has not been discussed in a public school board meeting, it's best not to discuss. I mean, I always say, call me if you're feeling frustrated, don't intrude yourself. I can't go home, you know, I'll walk a parking lot or I'll drive around my block a few times, they might, and when they, cops are called, it's not because I did anything wrong, I just couldn't go home yet. You know, so, yeah, just call anyone just to vent or do whatever you need to do with communication. Stays there. Things I just highlighted, oh, back to number five. Board members who receive any communications directly from the community at large regarding district issues should share those communications with the board or the superintendent. Number six, what do I do if a parent or community member complains about a specific decision? It is perfectly appropriate to discuss the thought process that resulted in a certain decision, because now it's public, right? You have that in a public meeting, so you can discuss what was publicly discussed, and why the board voted one way or another, as long as the process does not involve a confidential or executive session matter. Remember that one of your roles as a board member is to be an advocate for the district, and that being asked about board decisions provides you an opportunity to discuss positive matters and activities that are happening around the district. I think one of the interesting things about being a board person is, so, we vote how you vote at meetings. And, you know, we can, it's public, we can discuss that. And for the votes that are, you know, we've come to an understanding, you know, we may walk into a room with one way that we're thinking, but then based on information presented, we may decide to vote differently or with the group, because we have a better understanding of it. So I think it's helpful, because even when, you know, our decisions are changed, because we're more informed. Sometimes the public may not have full information, or didn't understand exactly what something was, how it was presented and discussed. And, you know, I think it can be helpful, but again, only things that were at meetings and for clarification. Let's see, I have another question here. Work on contact, but the media we covered. Oh, this was for about agenda setting. I was gonna, so, agenda setting is the sheer responsibility of the superintendent and board president, keeping the vice president in the conversation. Preparation, I wanted to add, and dissemination of the agenda, because, just to add the language, that's how it gets put out. So I was gonna add that, and I bring this to everyone's attention just so you know, so I'm not just changing language, it's like, you know, what I should do. And what if I have questions about an agenda item? So this is another thing I wanted to clarify, so, and we can decide if we want to attack it differently. But generally, what's happened is if the agenda cuts out, you read through all the material and you have questions. So, so as not to engage in that dialogue in email, we've tried to, and what the trainings will show, I hope, you know, we've done more trainings yet, but they'll say, "Present the question back to superintendent." You know, "I plan to ask this question," because you want to get an answer, and we need to vote on it, or we need to go forward. So if the superintendent isn't informed, and we just show up at the meeting, and here we are with a question, it may hold up the process of things. So it doesn't necessarily require the answer be given in email, but at least it gives the administrators time to come up with what the answer will be. And even if, for example, you have a question, but as you're reading through the material, you find the answer, I think it's good to still ask the question to the public, because someone else may have had that same thing, and be looking for that same kind of clarity. And it's not being redundant, because the public never knew that, you know, and saying, you know, "I..." You know, saying, you know, "As I was looking through this, this was a question I had, but I was able to see that, you know, as I read through this section, I found the answer. Here, here's what it was." And I think it will help the public understand, one, you know, we're prepared for meetings and two, they may have a question. So just that little piece, because you can always email, you know, questions in your community material. It's helpful if one of you vote. So that was it for that. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? No, we're all done, okay. Last thing is, oh, policies. Okay. Is this, is this?
This, right?
Yep. Okay. So, um... First, let me just see, where is this policies file? Okay. When I was, you know, reviewing policies through the new, I think this is, this is 4770 area OCS policies and they went, so it seemed new to me in language. And 4770, yeah. It said for the end in the packet. I thought that was, it was interesting and I thought it was great. I don't know what language we had for this type of policy in the past, but it's what we have now. And we have all these policies and some of them, I feel like we could do a better job of making them more tangible for the public. So for example, the board meeting one, we're going to put with the agendas. And this one struck me because, you know, having kids in school. I thought, "What is my daughter's addiction right first coming through the system?" And I know, because you've had one, has spawned the system. And how can we, you know, just putting this out doesn't say much. But how can we better communicate those pathways to graduation? You know, I've read, right now, I'm not aware, so I've read the handbook. But I wonder, you know, because you also talk about kids who take A-K classes or, you know, I'm just kind of following, if my daughter happens to take a class, she falls into whatever is kind of ending up wherever she is up. But what if kids had, students had a math or parents had a better math? You know, I don't, I mean, I don't know if that would be helping, so people who have kids graduating.
Years ago, I know, when it was like parent introduction night to the high school for the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, they were given a map. And you went to, it was literally like, it was, it was an open house, but it was well before school started. And they used to have this chart that, okay, well, you're on this level here, you could go off this way, you could go this way. And it did it for social studies, it did it for math, it did it for science. And you could see where you could suddenly, oh, okay, now you can veer this way and go advanced or, you know. And I know it hasn't existed, because a lot of kids aren't getting it. And so I don't know where it went. But I know there are parents that, like, they don't understand what's the difference between a Regis diploma and a Regis diploma with honors? Or what's the purpose of having a Regis diploma? What, you know, is it better than just a regular high school diploma? I almost think, because there have been a couple of parents who have mentioned, they're kind of bumbling their way through here and, you know, well, one kid that found out, but it was too late, "Oh, well, I could have taken Rati instead of, you know, taking another language," or whatever, you know. And I think there's a lot better job as the high school could do in orientating the eighth grade parents and kids, because kids don't always tell their parents, "Oh, well, yeah, well, I know I could do this or I could do that," you know. So I, that's, and so I think maybe, yeah, maybe there's a better way to do this.
Well, I can speak for what the counseling department does during orientation. They do spend quite a bit of time explaining, you know, various courses. The pathways are different. I mean, this policy was updated in 2018, so, right. A lot of the nuances has to do with New York State making available more pathways than the traditional, just the Regis, you know, Regis stations. So now there's, as you know, the Seal of Liberty, there's a STEM pathway, humanities pathway, an arts pathway.
Right, which is what made me think, because there's so much, there is all that now. And so perhaps we could, you know, I know that they do with students, but again, something online or a link that, that has a flow chart of sorts. Because even middle school lends itself into high school and how, you know, where your foundation counts from. I mean, and on top of that, I would even go a step further and say, you know, again, to have some sort of tangible piece of information that maybe at the orientation, I don't know, do all the clubs get to come out and, do colleges do that?
Yeah, the colleges do, yeah, they do the, basically, you know, they call them fairs or whatever, you know, different schools have different names. I know that there was an orientation type thing that Nikki did this year, which I've heard everything, no, for the kids, which I heard was a good thing for the kids. But I think the parents are feeling very left out. And I think that might help us with some more outreach into the community. Because pretty much kids go into high school and, you know, unless you're that parent that's involved in the school on a regular basis, you don't know a lot that's going on. Because kids are, kids are kids and not everyone shares and, you know. So I think there's a lot of parents who can't make it to, you know, to be a coach on lacrosse or, you know, or soccer or whatever, or be at the games. So I just think they need to know the other options that are out there. So maybe an orientation for the parents, but I was thinking a club fair. That was my other thought. I know this is a complete aside, but maybe Democratic Congress could, you know, a couple times a year? Because there's a lot of kids that, "Oh, I didn't know," or "I don't know when that club met." And colleges do it, you know, they, they do basically a fair. You know, they play games and, you know, invite kids to come over and, "Oh, hey, you know, you want to come here, you know, you want to try this club? This is what we do, this is what we're about, this is what we need." And I think it might, because, you know, when we talk about children that were saying how they didn't feel connected to the school, to the high school after that survey that was done. I think we need to up their game.
I'm just looking at our website now, the high school, I mean, the student services department has a pretty comprehensive slide and everything. This is the, like, this is what is written on our website. It's pretty, there's a bunch of things here, course selection guides, credit requirements and so forth. But I think, as I, if I hear you correctly, what you're saying is parents don't necessarily know this. And I can't speak to what, you know, conversations were had during the orientation, freshman orientation, for example. But there, there's a fair amount of information and I can cer, and I know that this past year, efforts were made to have children present the clubs because students were not hearing the announcements. Now, of course, they joined to, they're emailing the announcements and making them available on their screens, but students said, you know, they missed them and they didn't hear them. And, you know, there's a lot of things going on, so I can only imagine they'll pick up everything. But I know that the effort was made to make, to put students in front of the clubs so that they can represent what was going on. And that met with some success this past year, so we'll check in with Nikki to see what the idea plan is around.
It was, it was just a thought, you know, to kind of up the game a little bit. Because in order to make children more involved in their school community, it starts with those clubs.
And they've been fully subscribed.
Right.
I mean, they're, you know, those who listen, you know, but then there's a lot of competition for their time, too. I mean, there are, you know, athletics that are, you know, lots of that, you know, offered, I mean, lots of opportunities there and clubs and after-school and, you know, there's work. So there are a lot of things that they-
They do.
-that they do. And students do talk about, I mean, you know, those seniors that I interviewed at the end of the year, you know, one of the things that they mentioned that they wish they could have done more of was to participate in some clubs. I don't know where they would have found them on the schedule, but, you know, that's something-
Well, yeah, that, I mean, that's a whole big issue, but there's, I think there's a group, and I, and I call them the middle kids, that a lot of times falls into cracks.
They need someone to encourage them. Some of them need encouragement, you know, just to try something new. If your friends aren't there, that's okay. The one who's in there-
You'll make it right. That is just a thought.
Do we do, and I don't, you know, I'm learning as I go through, with the parents, sort of have the students orientation, do we do a high school orientation for the parents?
There's an eighth grade parent meeting.
Okay, is that, is that spring or is that fall?
That took place in March of this year.
So as, as parents of high school or ex-high school, whatever, does it, I mean, once spring sign, fall again, fall instead, I mean, do you find more time to make sure we're connecting with parents, they have information? Because there's, so I, I mean, I think we need to address the new, these pathways and make sure parents understand the different paths for those-
There's no, this is not new yet. This, this actually started about four years ago. So each year the state adds a different pathway. But the reason I know they know is, I got the information and I immediately went to Jess McKinnon and said, "Jess, what do you do about this?" And she said, "Valerie, where do you have to cover?" So they, I mean, the counseling department really keeps up on all of these requirements and-
But how do we get to the parents? So I'm asking the parents that are here, that have been following the process of kids going to high school, you know, who are always working to be improving. Are we doing a good job? Can we do it better? Do we, we should find that information? We're bargaining any graduate student who, many kids that are going through graduating.
I think once you get into high school level and to some extent, well, I definitely rely on my child. And if you do not have a good reporter, you will not have any idea what's going on. I mean, that is really, as a parent, unless I make a concerted effort to find out. And I do believe the information is there. And I've heard from multiple people, and I've been on it too, how the guidance department's website is, does have a tremendous amount of information on it. But I do, I rely on my daughter to tell me. No, I may not trust all of them, but I trust you all this one.
I mean, if you have the right, if you have the right kid that is a reporter, as Carrie said, you're golden. But I can tell you, I know how many parents would go, "Well, your kid always tells you, you know, what's going on?" Or, "You're in the school and, you know, what's going on?" And I don't know whether it's because they don't want to look for it, because they'd rather it come home in old-fashioned paper, you know, I, I don't know. But-
Does the spring orientation cover pathways and does it cover?
It's a ton of stuff.
It is, okay.
You know, and maybe it should be, you know, more than one opportunity to have a parent meeting. If you can't make this March first-
I mean, right, freshmen?
The freshman, I mean, there is a, there is a orientation for incoming ninth grade. And, you know, so that's, that's another, you know, that's another opportunity. But we can certainly speak to Nikki and that and share this, you know, feedback with her to let her know that, you know, potentially there are some parents who are not, you know, aware of the website or maybe missing out on some information or ways in which students can learn more about clubs who are not-
Do they get in high school the same, you have to sign off that you've read the handbook for high school parents and students, is that not in high school?
I mean, we do that electronically.
Don't look my name up. I read my, sorry.
I don't remember, I, you know, that's funny because I don't remember signing. I do remember my daughter signing it, but I don't remember. But I know that the meeting was more important to have in the spring before they went in. So this way you could be a part of the conversation about schedules and what you're taking and what you're not taking.
But that's your finisher thing, I mean, maybe there should be some-
I mean, I might have.
-to, well, you know, you've signed off on this information, tack it.
I just think there is a level of like more mystery and nervousness about the kids when they go into high school because everything is not laid out to the parents the way it is at the younger levels. And, you know, it's like, you know, I remember, do you have, you know, have your schedule? Do you understand how to read it? You know, and I'm not even like that. So I think if people, you know, I do think that there's an uncertainty for parents with the high school. So maybe having more than one parent meeting would help that.
There's a ton of stuff. I'm just looking at the ninth grade orientation packet.
I'm telling you, if you had heard the conversation from some of these people, I'm like, okay. So I don't know whether they're looking or not looking, so.
Oh, yeah, I definitely, we'll share that, we'll share the feedback.
But I think maybe another meeting and just a-
Okay, so, so, the only other thing is just, we still need to do our retreat. Having to email suggestions for dates again, couldn't get anybody to facilitate dates that we had even or after a board meeting. They just, it wasn't a big step from their experience to do a retreat. Our team building after a board meeting is not as productive as it needs to be. People were just, we worked all day or done whatever all day and now we're at a meeting and now we're, you know, we want it to be productive. So also now another email for us. And some of the other things in the policy handout you got and also the thing that I did with the paper, but which is from the board manual. Oh, actually, no, I think I ran out of ink. So I can email you. But definitely is in the policy. So just, you know, with the retreat, you know, we'll have to talk about, I think, leadership and, you know, what does that mean? What does that look like? How does that translate into the type of student that we want out of our district? Because we really need to be a solid team. There's a lot of work to do in the district, especially considering a lot of things that are happening in the past year. And to help us just grow and be strong, it starts with us. So some things to review and, you know, we'll go over there. So I think that's it. It was a lot. And I think everyone, it's just been, it's just been piling up and just needed to get done. So the next one will be like one issue or two. For now.
So you see positive thinker.
Oh, you know what, Michelle, I'm going to have to do this.
Oh, I know what it is.
So I just, yeah, the, the language, this is just, I think that's the new number, 2342. It has to do with, you know, it has to do with agenda dissemination, setting whatever. Two things we're missing from there. And it has to do with how we notify the community. It says how we notify the media. But it doesn't say that we give, you know, the media, I think it's 24-hour notice to the media for three days, 24 or 48 hours?
Before it goes public.
Yeah, we don't, that piece is missing from the one I printed. And then also, sometimes we have our, you know, an emergency meeting and that information, because people, you know, we've got that accusation, you know, we're kind of all kinds of stupid things all over the place. We do notice that the people aren't aware that we're doing it. Sometimes if it's within 24 hours, those random come about happens. Susan actually has to give each board member a, was it like an affidavit? We have to sign off and say, "We agree to have this meeting with less than 24 hours' notice." I don't- I think it was only once. But, you know, it's like an emergency situation that like, you just have to come in now because whatever's happening. This is some of those things that we actually do. And they're within the, defined by law on how we have to do them. They're not explained and I know it's to the public, for sure, it's the same. Pieces of knowledge to public.
I guess policy committee, that's our first line, right? When is our first meeting? Oh, yeah, right here, it was kind of great. I wasn't sure it was, don't I leave something?
I'm going to see if I can stick. I was just thinking with your eyes open. Okay, so thank you. So it's such an unusual meeting, so we just close it, I think. Actually, you know what?
We need a motion.
I don't need a motion. Okay, then, yeah, this. And what time is it? 9:13, thank you. We're done.